If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free, public, sovereign, one of these nations, under God, in the good and holy name of this law. I make a motion to approve the agenda with those amendments. Support? Jerry, could we have a little call, please? Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
We'll see, Jerry. Now, we will go ahead and open the floor for public comment. We do ask that if you are going to come to the podium, that you keep your comments within three minutes, and if you would also say your name and your address, and write it on the paper there that's in front of you. That's always helpful. Seeing no one, we will close public comment, and move to the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on March 2nd. We have the closed session minutes that we need to look over from March 2nd, along with the minutes from the work session that was held on March 2nd. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Jerry, could we have a little call, please? Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
We'll see, Jerry. And that brings us to our first public hearing of this evening.
Yes, sorry. Thinking about it. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first public hearing this evening is with respect to the vacant lot located at 606 East North Street. It was previously presented to the city council. The city did receive proposals from two interested parties. One was from the Career Technical Center. The other was from abutting property owners. The Career Technical Center offer is essentially to construct a single-family residential dwelling on site. The one from the abutting property owners is to subdivide the property by the three abutting property owners to pay the city $2,525 for the lot, and to essentially maintain the area as open space. The chart that I just passed out this evening just simply shows a quick financial impact, if you will, based upon the two offers. The new residential dwelling, which could perhaps take about a year to construct, depending upon how it falls within the Career Technical Center's school year, would add approximately $29,000 over a 10-year period of time to the tax base. It is consistent with having a single-family home there would be consistent to the area. The additional property owner, their concept of splitting it between the three, paying the dollars, there will also be an increase over time to the tax base as well, and looking again at that same 10-year threshold, is about $2,000 of additional SEV. It's really, you know, a question for council to discuss with respect to, you know, what is believed to be the best for the area, best for the neighborhood. Certainly, I think everyone may understand the desire by the abutting neighbors to wish to have the area maintained open. Certainly provides for a pretty view, a pretty open space, a pretty area. That being stated, you know, it is part of the residential neighborhood that has been provided to include a home there. It just so happens that there hasn't been a property yet constructed. The CTC coincidentally also was involved, and Jerry, you might know this better, is it two homes or three homes? Two, okay.
Holbrook.
Two homes along Holbrook, which is the street just adjacent to North Avenue, that they had built under a similar situation, where they built it as a part of essentially a class project. So, there's, if you were some pros and some cons to either side, and it's really up for discussion, and certainly it would be appropriate to invite anybody from the public. I know there are parties here from both interests that might want to speak.
Okay. At this time done, we will open the floor in a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak on either of these two interested parties, we would welcome that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sign here.
Uh huh.
My name is Dave Cox. I am the Career and Technical Education Director for the Wexman-Saki ISD. And just to give you a little history, currently, we, and also Brad, Brad Van Buren is our lead instructor in our Applied Construction Technology Program. Currently, we provide the labor, if you will, for many of the Habitat for Humanity homes. And what we run into with that, even though it's an excellent partnership, is we don't necessarily control all aspects of the build, meaning if you're familiar with Habitat, it is a community build. So, at any given point, our students aren't getting everything. Our goal is to have a student start with a shovel, and then with a key handing off to an owner, and everything in between. So, it really comes down for us, the experience for our students is the reason that we put a bid in for that lot, to give them a well-rounded construction trades background. So, that was, I just wanted you to understand that history of that. If you have any questions for me, I can certainly address those.
I do.
Yes.
Why didn't you bid more than a dollar for the lot?
Go ahead.
With all due respect, if you really wanted to go through with this project.
And that, my superintendent, Mr. Jeanette, was the one who put the bid in. Alls I can tell you is we felt that that was something where the Board of Education, because they're not necessarily into purchasing land, not that they wouldn't, if something were to, you know, if this were to happen, that they would look at that. Again, Brad is pretty insistent, and I would agree, that that's something we need to move forward with, with the property. But it is, it is taxpayers' dollars. Even the dollar that we submit is still a taxpayer's dollar. So, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and we believe that with, and I think Mr. Pescha had made clear, the ongoing costs for the city in the future is, if we can build a house, which we can build it in two years, just to say it on that one, two, right Brad?
Two.
Two years, controlling the gas bill, that there'll be ongoing revenue for the city for years to come. But that was really, you know, Mr. Jeanette's decision. He said, "Let's put a dollar down there," and it was a board action, board decision more than mine, but it doesn't mean that they wouldn't reconsider and look at other lots. We're certainly looking. That's our, that's our, it doesn't mean we're not going to build, or continue down the path of looking for a lot. We really need to do that, to get, to get what we think for the students', best interest of the students'. It's a good question.
You used to build homes in the past, or?
Yes.
Did you just do rehab in the city?
No, we built. There's the two that I think Jerry Adams had mentioned that are right adjacent to the lot. They were built by Career Tech Center. I want to say in '04 or '05, or somewhere in that neighborhood, prior to my arrival.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ed Wendover, on behalf of Due Point, wannabe abutting property owners, my neighbor Tom Olstead, and our other neighbor is unfortunately down in, and I work for medical things today. Down there with those NCAA wannabes. Sorry, a little Spartan humor there. It was our, it was that neighbor, Richard, who instigated the request to sell the vacant lot. Essentially, if you've seen the lot, and you'll want to see it quickly, because you can just see the end of the little kid's toboggan slope, which is melting, thank goodness, just for a weather comment. The three property owners most adjacent to it went together here to suggest that we would keep the historic use, which preserves that fabulous old oak tree, which is situated in a very dangerous location for development, I'm afraid. We've used it for gardening, for sledding, and as green space. We've mowed it. The only thing we haven't done is pay taxes on it. And we're, I guess we're here tonight to ask your permission to pay taxes on it. Nothing against the program, and in fact, those are very nice houses. But we think, A, that maybe having all of the houses they build altogether in a neighborhood is not such a desirable thing, and the house that Richard has, the one right next to it on the corner, has been for sale for five years. So, I'm not sure that you can count on the speculative nature of that idea, in all fairness. We would suggest other lots, and we wish you all the best. Any questions about our use and what we want to do with it? Save the oak tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of discussion, and open it up for discussion here.
We had a couple of questions, just to get some clarification. I think it was answered, but the initial request that initiated this bidding process was by which party?
Neighbors, I believe.
I wondered if that was the initial request, was by the neighbors?
I honestly, I'm not sure if it was by the neighbors or the CTC. I know that we had talked about, after hearing about the CTC's request, that the neighbors were also, excuse me, after hearing about the neighbors' request, that the CTC had also indicated through community development, interest in that lot as well. And so, that's why we just brought it together, obviously, to council, to put up the public offering accordingly. I couldn't tell you exactly if it was one that came in first.
Looks like Mr. Olstead can.
Might be able to give you some input there. Mr. Reins, who's not here, gentleman, Mr. Don A. Arber, is the gentleman that initiated the study of the city. I don't know exactly what the process was, but I think he's the one that kind of turned this through here.
And then, historically, the other two homes, those were, those were city lots as well, and they were bids, I'm thinking, correct, that those were city lots prior?
In terms of the request, probably over the last 10 years, we've had Mr. Olstead inquire about the property. We've had the schools inquire about the property. We've had a variety of individuals. So, this has been talked about, you might say, or, you know, it's been subject to inquiry for probably a number of years, and so, really, there wasn't anyone in particular that facilitated, "Okay, let's move ahead." Essentially, because there was interest on the part of the adjacent property, and because there was interest on the part of the schools, we decided, "Well, let's go ahead and, you know, let's advertise the property," as we have in the past, you know, to see what kind of interest. So, no one particular party initiated this.
Do you have any information on how the other lots got developed? If they were owned by the city and sold?
I don't.
You know?
They were originally owned by the house to the south there. In my head, where I sit right now, it was part of that also, by the Boersmen, not that Don Leach across the street, but his brother. And I believe that they, the city acquired him through a tax sale.
Again, is that true?
Yeah, I don't know a ton of details. That goes back quite a ways.
So, did the, did the, um, did the sale or the bid say, "Provide us with a proposal on what you want to do with the property," or did it say, "Give us a bid on how much you want to pay us for the property?"
The bid itself just offered the property for sale. It didn't say, "Give us a proposal." The bid notice did not, did not require any kind of...
Give us a proposal to purchase the property? Just a bid?
Yeah.
A bid on the property? Make an offer.
Yeah, I think the construction project at CTC does is a wonderful opportunity for our students. But again, the other two are right there in the same spot. There is a house that's been for sale for a long time. There's neighbors wanting to maintain the historic nature of that area, save the tree, save the open space a little bit. And there are other places, am I right, in town, where there are lots that may come available for CTC. Is that true? Jerry, are there other spots that might, that they could look at, too? Do we have other lots in places that CTC could maybe build?
I had a list of lots. This is probably the one that was most conducive to their particular needs. Doesn't mean there aren't other lots available, but again, this is the, they decided to submit a proposal on this one.
Right. I would agree, it's a great program. I just, with this situation, I can't help but feel that I want to honor the feelings of the desires of the neighborhood, the neighbors who have been there a long time and invested in that community, or in that neighborhood, and their willingness to step up for this and to buy it.
And I also appreciate both of these options that have been put before us, but I, and I understand the feelings of everyone in, but if we go back to how was it submitted, it was submitted for sale, and the top bid came in from the people who live in that community. So... And, you know, I also understand, looking at the figures from a tax base perspective, what the difference it could mean for the city over that period of time. And there's a huge difference.
Mr. Adams, you mentioned, so they've gotten a current list of the city lots, and you were referencing lots, was that one specifically owned by the city?
We provided them with other locations. I'm going to say that we provided them with every available lot, but we have, based on the specifications, we've provided other locations for them to potentially consider.
I think even though, over 50 years, it looks like building a, having the Career Tech Center build a home there, there's more dollars. I think preserving the integrity of the area and the wishes of the long-term property owners and residents has value that goes beyond monetary value, I think. So, it was a bid, and they brought in the highest bidder, so... Okay. Is there any further discussion, and if not, would somebody need to make a motion? How do I word this? You'd like to say, like, who was selling it to?
No.
Or just?
It's all sorts.
Okay.
I think you would add, you know, to...
To the highest bidder?
Well, I would say, I would specify, maybe to the neighbors or to the CTC.
Okay, okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution to adopt ordinance number 2015-3 to sell the vacant property located at 606 East North Street to the adjacent neighbors. Do we have a support?
Support? We do have one question. If this goes through with the neighbors, has there already been discussion on how that lot's getting split amongst you in terms of, you know, everybody's in agreement on that splitting, so we don't end up having a debate later that comes back?
How do I answer that? No, I don't, I don't, I don't foresee any problems, no.
Jerry's got an answer.
If they purchase, or if you sell them the lot, and they split it, it will be coming back to you, by the way.
What if it's split again?
It's a flat subdivision lot, so you, the council, the court requires council approval for the splitting of the flat of lots.
Right.
So, you'll see this again if they decide to split.
I also believe, too, that their offer was contingent upon getting through any other approvals necessary, legislative approvals necessary. So, if the council should deny it, then...
Yeah, I could picture a say and go for it now, and then later say, "No."
Lee, do you have something?
Yeah, so there's two, there are two issues that I want to bring up. The first is the, the motion to approve the ordinance that has a, that has a placeholder, if you will, for both the sum and the purchasers. So, I would, I would certainly incorporate that into the ordinance, that it referenced the November 19, 2014 offer to purchase in the amount of $2,525, and will be sold to Tom and Mary Olstead, Richard and Gene Reins, and Due Point LLC. The division, as Mr. Adams has indicated, will have to come back. But there's also, if, just looking at the bid document, the bid document itself says that the parcel will be used as a private shared park and community garden. And so, I'm not sure whether that's a restriction that the city wants to make or not make in accordance with the bid document, but it's probably something we should talk about now in terms of the conveyance of the document, and whether or not that's a restriction that the city is going to include in that, in that conveyance document.
Where is the proposal?
The restriction is, and they can't build a house, and we're two years down the road.
Yeah, I mean, it would be for a quote-unquote "private shared park and community garden." I'm not sure yet what that, what that means, but we can sort of sort through those issues. I just wasn't sure whether the city was considering that as part of this sale, or you're not going to impose any other deed restrictions as that parcel.
Can that come when it gets straightened out at the planning commission? Can those stipulations, or is that, that is something we need to do now?
Yeah, because this would be included in the, in the conveyance of the property itself. It's not at all dependent upon the division part that Mr. Adams is talking about.
So, how do I, what, what... Maybe the sale, the important part about the sale is that the parcel gets split, and then that way, it can't be built on. I don't feel like I have to, you know, say we have to use it as a community garden, because, you know, in five years, if they don't want to do a community garden, then I just want to see that it's split, and that the different pieces added to the, their lot.
So, if the, if the division portion is going to be considered later, it's probably prudent to address them concurrently. Because if not, what could happen, although I don't expect it, is that you would have the conveyance of the property now owned likely as joint tenants in some way, this parcel.
Right.
And then, if it's not divided, then it creates altogether different issues.
Yeah.
And I suspect the owners wouldn't want it under that scenario either.
So, what am I supposed to do, then?
So, what's the motion?
I'm thoroughly confused.
Well, I think...
I think you need to amend the motion.
I think, I think you could make a motion to approve the, or to authorize the sale pursuant to the ordinance, conditioned on the application to divide it as well, because I think you'll want to process those concurrently.
So, I would like to amend my motion to what he said. To include the sale price? The, the sale price, the parties involved, and the pursuant to the division, you said it, just what he said. Did you get what he said?
Conditioned on approval of the, of the division of the property. But my understanding from the comments here, that does not include any other restrictions.
Right. Because the divisions would, would...
Take care of that.
Okay. So, that's what I wanted to say. Okay, so, is that a amendment? We already had a second, we can move it forward for...
We need to have...
We need to...
Work the new, the new amendment.
Okay, so, I need some support for that. Would you support that as well?
Yeah, I have to rescind the first one and then support this one, yeah.
Okay. So let's get, let's make a motion to rescind the first. I did. I said I withdraw my, my motion.
Okay.
And was to make the motion as stated by Mike.
Okay.
Yeah, you send it, I'll rescind the first one, support, and then support on this one.
So can I have some discussion?
Yes.
With the other council members here. Do you have any questions about what I said in regards to, you know, making it conditional upon a private shared park and community garden?
I, I think that as you said, once it's divided, it, you know, there's no way anybody's going to be able to build on any one of those parcels. So I think that keeps its integrity.
And they can do whatever they want with it as long as it's consistent within the neighborhood.
Yes, the lot.
Are you, are you meaning-
Jerry, Jerry's waiting on his last one.
No, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
They're going to each have to then assemble their particular section into their existing lots, okay? Because when they divide it, it will no longer be in conformity with the local zoning ordinance, so they can't divide it as such.
Right.
So they'll be deciding through a survey, they'll be creating legal descriptions for three parcels, and then the individual parcels will then be assembled into their existing lots.
Okay.
So basically their legal descriptions are going to change. It'll be their existing legal descriptions plus whatever each one of these individuals gets, so to speak. So this is a point of information.
Okay. That makes sense. I'm going to reiterate. Okay, Jerry, could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama? Sippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Will she carry?
Come back soon with another.
Okay, then we move to the second public hearing this evening.
Yes, the second public hearing is with respect to the lease addendums for the DEQ building. I'm going to punt this one to Owen Roberts, our finance director. Before he takes on, I'm going to say how I'm very excited that we're actually at this moment this evening. This is part of a milestone for us to reach. We've been somewhat concerned off and on over the last few years what the state's plan was going to be for the use of that building, especially since it was designed and built to their specifications and standards. We are very much relieved that they do see Cadillac in their long-term plan of staying here and staying local. Quite a, quite a success.
Okay, thank you. And I would echo that. The, what's before you tonight is to extend the lease. The lease was set to expire one year from now, and they wanted to go with an option of 20 years beyond that. So a total of 21 years from now. They're going to do that in two phases. So the first phase is a six-year commitment, and with your approval tonight, once the documents get executed, the state is committing to that first six-year extension. And then when that six years is up, they also have an option to extend it for 15 more beyond that. As part of the renewal, we have committed to make several maintenance and repairs to the facility, mainly being carpet, which we've planned to do for several years now. And as part of this, they've asked that we commit to doing that. I think the language in there is like within 120 days after October 1st or something like that. And that coincides with the state's fiscal year because they want to do some, some things to the facility using state funds that will be budgeted as of October 1st. So we have, we have committed to make those repairs as well. The last bond payment will be made in October, and there will be sufficient funds on hand to make that final payment. Those were 20-year bonds issued at the outset of the, of the project. So those will be paid off this fall, and we're, we're excited to have this completed here tonight, so.
Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for anyone from the public that would like to speak in regards to this. Seeing no one, we will close that portion of the public hearing. Was there any discussion on the part of the council?
I mean, when you look at how much they're paying per month, that would be a humongous problem if, if they weren't leasing that. It's a substantial amount of money. Do you know how mu, and then you, it sounds like Owen would no longer be having the bond payment and that was-
Right.
Do you know Russell, how much that was a year?
Well, the last principal payment is $140,000. So it's been, you know, once you factor in interest, it's been, you know, 150 to 180, I think, per year for the last 20 years. So you won't have that, you know, you would think with a 20-year-old facility, your repairs and maintenance will go up some, and we'll have to make some investments to the, into the property over the period of the lease. But yeah, without that bond payment, that's a, that's a huge factor.
I must know they're committed to Cadillac as much as we all are.
I agree.
It's a great place. It's a beautiful building and-
Great location.
Great location. They'd be foolish to abandon it, of course. There's no measure of what the state-
It's a huge effort to have them in the city.
It is. Okay. Can we have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance number 1D15-05 to approve an addendum to sublease to the State of Michigan of real property located at 122th Street Park. Jerry, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama? Sippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry. And now we are at the point of the agenda where we have some communication to carry some serious-
We have a request from the Cadillac Symphony Orchestra to display a banner from May 11, 2015 to May 18, 2015. I'll make a motion to approve the display of the banner for the symphony from May 11 to May 18.
Support?
Can we have a roll call, Jerry?
Councilmember Sippers?
Yep.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama? Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry.
The second request we have is from the Downtown Cadillac Association to display a banner from May 4, 2015 to May 11, 2015, and also from May 18, 2015 to May 25, 2015 for the art walk.
So they have to put it up and take it down and put it back up again?
Before somebody else is in there?
Yep. Symphony is there.
So they don't take it down and put it back up?
The city then-
Do you take it down and put it back up? And how much is that each time we do that?
Several hundred dollars.
Yeah. Why can't they just do it for one week? What's the week of the art walk?
Don't know.
Is it the 18th to 25th? That would have to, because they wouldn't put it up afterwards. It's all months. If it weren't for somebody else. That's true.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of the banner from May 4 to May 11 and May 18 to May 25 for the Downtown Cadillac Association's art walk.
Support. Jerry, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama? Sippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry.
Let's see, the next request we have is from the Cadillac JC's for the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street on April 4, 2015, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM for the annual community Easter egg hunt.
It's really from about 12:00 PM to 12:04 PM?
Well, but for the public, it's actually 2:00 PM as well.
2:00, oh, they shut off. That's right, that's right.
So we have somebody from the JC's here this evening, would you like to say something?
Hello. Hi, I'm Sandy. I'm president of the Cadillac JC's and we're just planning that. We're doing it April 4th, like you said. Oh, sorry.
Okay.
2:00 PM is our sharp, is our egg hunt, and literally it's like that and completely gone. And we hand out goodie bags, donations provided by businesses around the city, plus what we raise money for throughout the year, and we stuff the goodie bags instead of the eggs. So they bring the eggs back to us and then we hand out goodie bags, and we're looking to stuff about 500 of them this year. So, and that's about the average of goodie bags that we normally end up handing out. So it's a lot of fun.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve the request for the Cadillac JC's for the closure of Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street on April 4th. And the street closures could take place from 12 to 4:00 PM for the annual community Easter egg hunt.
Support. Roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama? Sippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry.
The next request we have is from Joy Van Dri for the downtown yard bomb program. The second annual art, it looks like for the art walk in Downtown Cadillac where they'd like to put up the yard bomb again.
I think that was so cool last year. I just, I loved that. There was a message from Joy that she couldn't be here tonight.
I noticed that they're putting, we are putting some restrictions on it this year and trying to retain it to the one block, and then if there's a need, then it'll go beyond that.
I'd also like to think about putting a time on it, because last year, by the time they came down, they didn't look funny any right. They were so gnarly. They were looking a little rough, so we maybe shouldn't have them a quite as long.
That's all in there.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the requirement from the DCA for the second annual art walk yarn bomb program in Downtown Cadillac, subject to the conditions noted.
Support. Jerry, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama? Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry.
Looks like the last request we have is from the Child Protection Council for pinwheels for prevention. And I believe we have somebody here to talk about that.
Hi, I'm Karen Staub, and I'm here on behalf of the Child Protection Council. Jerry asked me to come in and kind of share what we were asking of the city. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month and also Month of the Young Child. Every year in Lansing, this will be their seventh year, they've planned a Prevention Awareness Day at the state Capitol. And it's just to try to bring awareness for prevention services that work to try to prevent child abuse and neglect before it happens. The pinwheels came in from the Prevent Child Abuse America, and they are just a symbol of childhood to kind of remind everybody to play their part in the prevention of child abuse and neglect. And so on a national level, they do this all across America, where states, local governments, everything, they plant pinwheel gardens. And so as part of the Child Protection Council, they ask us to try to plan something locally. And this year, our discussion has been to try to involve not just the Child Protection Council, but all different agencies that work to prevent child abuse and try to bring them out and do like a procession through town. Plant a pinwheel garden. We're hoping to do that on the corners of Harris and Mitchell and before Planted Beds. The pinwheels will stay up through the month of April. People are encouraged to take them, take them home, plant them in their own gardens or whatever. And I think the last thing, at our last meeting, they were asking me to try to have some signs of what they stood for. So they would just have signs, like the yard state-type signs that would have the pinwheels on them, say, "Pinwheels for Prevention," something to the effect of, "Do your part to prevent child abuse and neglect." So that's pretty much what we are asking. I brought some flyers, if you guys want to see what would be circulated. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Group program.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Child Protection Council for the Pinwheels for Prevention Program in Downtown Cadillac, subject to the conditions noted.
Support?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama? Sippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry. And now we will move on to an appointment this evening.
We have a recommendation regarding an appointment to the Construction Board of Appeals for County Health.
The good candidates just keep rolling in. We thought, or weren't, or were all the same, listen, I think we have now.
You have.
Good for you.
Now, the, I saw the application, I might be missing a communication. Is there the specifics on the term?
Two years.
For, from today, then?
To expire on March 16, 2017.
Oh, you guys are very cheap there.
Yeah.
I think you got it, too.
It's right there, probably still there, I think.
I'll do a little better. Well, there you go.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of County Health to the Construction Board of Appeals for a two-year term expiring on March 16, 2017.
Support.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama? Sippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry. Thank you.
Mayor members of the city council, the first item under the city manager's report is the request for authorization to once again participate in the My Deal or the Michigan Deal program for the purchase of road salt for our 2015, 2016 upcoming winter season. The city anticipates the need to acquire approximately 1,500 tons of road salt to cover the entire winter. Depending upon the state's final bid award, we expect that total to be approximately $100,000 if it comes in at around $65 a ton. We are able to achieve an economy to scale by being a part of the state, the state's bidding program as for a lot of other municipalities that's required. And through participation in this program, we're able to get a better rate. And therefore, the request again this evening is to authorize the city to be able to participate in the state's bidding program for the purchase of road salt for the 2015-16 season.
Is this the same as we purchased last year? We're going to have a really light winter next year.
Don't jinx it. Not too light, because we have to have our ski resorts and everybody, snowmobilers need a little bit of snow.
Okay, do we have a motion? I'll make a motion to authorize the city to participate in the My Deal competitive bidding process and approve the commitment to the purchase of up to 1,500 tons of seasonal road salt through and, through the resulting State of Michigan contract at the unit cost bid approved by the State of Michigan. Support. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama? Sippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Jerry.
The next item is with respect to the Lake Street project as a part of the street improvement project. Sorry, I just stumbled on my words there. On March 5, 2015, we did open bids for this project. Three bids were received. It is being recommended this evening that the project be awarded to Dunbar Excavation, including a 5% contingency amount, bringing the total to $236, 239 and 50 cents, which is still lower than, than the next bidder on the list as well, even with the contingency put in. Funds will be available throughout- Funds will be available through our Water and Sewer Fund, as well as Major Street Fund for the project.
Was this the same project that we were looking at at one point for the...
Act 51?
Yeah. I don't know if it's Act 51, but the revolving with the road commission?
Yes.
With the grant. And I know there was, last year, you said that the hope is that possible when this project came out, we'd get that for this year, or is that not?
It's not gonna happen this year. It's, uh, those dollars are going to Mackinac Trail project that the road commission's putting in for.
So we'll probably, I mean, we probably lost our opportunity on that grant for another few years, then.
Um, do you know when it's coming back around?
We've got this back grant for about next year, 2016, road grant for the public.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody was able to hear that. So we did get a grant for 2016? Well, I...
Small urban grant for 2016, we'll sign a treaty with that one.
Marcus, can you repeat that so that people at home can hear that?
Um, yes. Sorry, the mics don't pick up very well. Um, the Public Works Director and City Engineer referenced that we'll have those grant dollars for a fiscal year, or calendar year 2016 project, and we'll be able to reassign them to a different road project versus the Lake Street project.
Because we have lots of streets coming up for the next many years, so we'll have projects ready to accept those grant dollars.
Okay. Motion to award the contract for the 2015 Lake Street Improvement Project to Dunbar, in the amount of $2,000, $236,239 and 50 cents.
Support. Carrie, could we have a real call please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Stevens?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
I'm sorry I hesitated to that, but as soon as it was going so fast, I had a question. Why we would be awarding the bid to them in the amount that includes the contingency? Wouldn't we just award them in the amount that they bid, and then have the contingency if we needed it?
This allows that to happen, so we don't have to come back to City Council should there be to, uh, be a contingent.
So it's really in the amount up to?
Right.
Yes.
Which then begs the question, 50 cents, really?
You want me to be exact, or do you want me to, you know, be a...
Fair, 50 cents.
Sorry.
I agree. I get what you're saying. Okay. Okay. $50,000 and 50 cents.
Okay. Um, item C, uh, was an add-on this evening, and I appreciate Council's consideration of that. Uh, it's for downtown sidewalk cafes for both Crown Lake Beer Company and Herman's European Cafe. Uh, there was a communication that was left, um, at your locations, as well, as well as a, essentially, a site plan or a drawing that shows the two, uh, the two cafes. Uh, the Michigan Department of Transportation is requiring that the city of Cadillac authorize, um, the cafes before they will issue, uh, their permit. Uh, the sidewalk is under MDOT control accordingly. Um, staff has reviewed the request and support these, subject to the two following conditions. Uh, one, that the city, uh, Cadillac total ordinances, uh, as it relates to sidewalk cafes in Section 46, uh, Section 5, is followed, which includes a requirement for a site plan and proof of insurance. Uh, and two, of course, that they're in compliance with the requirements of, uh, MDOT regarding sidewalk, sidewalk cafes. I'm not sure if there's any more that you wanted, Jay. I think that kind of covers it.
Other than the fact that the proposed location of the cafes meets the ordinance, and, um, in both cases, we've impressed upon them the need to maintain sufficient clearance zones, so that people can, uh, can move in a two-way fashion on the sidewalks. And, uh, if you look at both the site plans, for example, you'll see that they've both provided, uh, more than sufficient clearance to accommodate pedestrian movement.
And the one, this would be a different site plan than that was there last year.
Yes.
Yeah, a little different last year?
Pardon?
A little different last year?
It, uh, yes, slightly differed, uh, in that, uh, the one site plan for Herman's, uh, provides for more clearance than it did last year for the movement of pedestrians.
It looks like from here, there'd be feet.
More than sufficient to meet the intent of the ordinance, or the requirements of the ordinance.
And this is a new requirement, if I recall. We've never done this before, we approve it?
It's, well, it's, uh, it's somewhat new, but MDOT wants some assurance of that, that we, um, approve these before they consider them. And our code, city code, requires your approval. Uh, and so we're kind of going back and redoing it, you might say, for, for these two. And you'll likely see one or two others, uh, over the next few months.
Yes. Nice. Motion to approve the request of Crown Lake Beer Company and Herman's European Cafe. They have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in 2015, meeting the requirement, the two requirements noted in the communication.
Support. Carrie, could we have a real call please?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Okay. Um, Mayor members of the City Council, the last item under the City Manager's Report is item D, uh, which, again, thank you for adding this evening. It has to deal with necessary street sweeper repairs, as, uh, the Public Works Department was, um, uh, looking forward, uh, towards next season's spring, which it feels like today, we jumped in headfirst. Uh, I think tomorrow, the weather's gonna make it a little colder again. Uh, but, but nevertheless, we're certainly looking forward to now cleaning up, uh, all of the roadway debris, uh, the sand and so forth, that's the aftermath of the winter. Uh, it became known that, uh, repairs were needed to one of our street sweeping machines. Uh, quotations were quickly brought together, uh, and we are looking at, uh, awarding to Bell Equipment, um, a contract of $9,798.53, uh, in order to, um, make the necessary repairs. Uh, we are asking City Council to waive competitive bidding. We did get quotes, but we did not have a chance to put it out to bed, given the timing of when we noticed that that machine was, was essentially broken, uh, as it relates to this meeting. And it is important, as we mentioned a little bit earlier this afternoon, we got it up and running sooner versus later, in order to stay on top of as much as we can, cleaning up, uh, the streets after the winter. After that.
And I just heard a report, um, actually this morning, about street sweepers. I know it's very weird, but I was on public radio, and it was, how important that job is, because the debris on the streets is full of solids and salts and all kinds of things that, when they get in the storm sewers, can go into the water shed and create quite a problem. So it's more than an aesthetic need, it's really an environmental need as well.
I'd be like, um, probably for the public to hear too, um, when Owen Roberts was giving the Capitol Improvement Plan this afternoon, it was noted that, actually, on that plan was to replace this equipment, but this, this doing this will prevent us from having to replace it for a few years, which is, if I remember right, it was about $190,000 or that back then.
That was 175, and this will get, get us several more years of life. And I wanted to point out, too, that, um, we think it's only gonna cost about 7,800. There was about a $2,000 item that's, uh, something that our street sweeper doesn't, doesn't think we're gonna need to do, once they, once they get it down there. Um, so, we need to award it, just in case we do have to do that, uh, up to the 97, 98. Uh, but we think it's gonna come in underneath that. So, really, I think it's a good investment to extend the life of that.
I appreciate, um, you, the staff getting a couple of quotes on this, even though we didn't go through the actual bidding process. Um, at least, we've done a little bit. Um, so I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding, um, for the street sweeper repairs.
Support. Carrie, could we have a real call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
And then I'll make a motion to award the contract, um, to, for the Elgin Street Sweeper Repair to Bell Equipment, in the amount of $9,798.53.
Support. Carrie, could we have a real call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Okay. Um, this next item is under Adoption of Ordinances and Resolutions. Uh, it's the request to adopt a resolution amending the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2015. Um, if you look at Attendant A, which is the last page of the, uh, public packet, uh, excuse me, the council packet, um, it itemizes expenses that were not foreseen, and which we do need to make an adjustment to. Um, the first item is under Legal Services, and it's amending, uh, the contractual services line item detail by $65,000 for the purpose to appropriate funds to cover legal fees in excess of original budget expectations. Uh, reserves on hand will be needed to cover those additional appropriations. The next item, uh, and again, this is under General Fund, uh, is under the Fire Department, amended, uh, the line items in detail regarding salaries and wages under firefighters, and their fringe benefits. Uh, and again, the purpose should be to appropriate funds to cover final benefit costs of recently retired firefighter. Uh, funds are available in the city's reserve for sick and vacation accruals to cover those costs. Uh, and the amount is, uh, total amount of $35,000. Uh, the other, uh, fund, uh, that we're looking to amend is the Major Street Fund, uh, again, under Contractual Services, uh, and amending the line item in detail for construction of, by $30,000. Uh, and that would be to appropriate additional funds for the complete reconstruction of Lake Street from South Street to Chapin Street. Uh, and reserves, again, are on hand, uh, sufficient to cover the additional project costs, as with the other line items as well. Owen, is there anything I missed? Nope, well said. Thank you, well written. Thank you.
It's good to know that the amount for the, um, the retirement, that's already set aside in the Sick and Vacation Accrual Fund. That's helpful.
Good planning.
Do we have any sense at all where we're at year-to-date with any of our overall general spending, if we have to take money out of reserves for these other two items?
Well, um, we provided the update as of December 31st, and I would say, you know, the, the revenue is coming in as we anticipated. Um, and as of at least December year-end, um, you know, we've identified a couple of the things that, that looks like are gonna go slightly over, but those are, at this point, at least, the only amendments that we're, that we're asking for. So, I guess the answer, the simple answer would be, um, I'm not anticipating, um, at this point, at least, any additional, um, uh, we're gonna have one more, uh, retirement, unfortunately, prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
So, once we get there, we'll probably have to come back for one more of those, when we, when we get that identified. But, uh, but other than that, it's, it's looking like things will come in as appropriated, so.
Sometimes we, you know, are able to make it up somewhere else with salary savings or something, but we're not really seeing that anywhere.
Well, we, we have experienced some savings with some vacancies, but if you remember, that's primarily in the police department, and we've leveraged a good portion of that to be able to do the, the radio system upgrade earlier this year. So we've, we've already, we've already spent most of that. So that was 100? That was like 118 or something like that, I think, 2,000?
The, um, I know this one, I know in the past, we would have like the, if there was budget items that we were, that were under budget, that we were taking some some. I know there's little notations about reserves, but what specific, is this what we'd be calling our fund balance, that we're taking the legal services and the contractual services for the Major Street Fund? So, and I know it just references reserves. What fund is this fund?
Yep, unappropriated fund balance, just available, uh, undesignated reserves, fund balance, yep.
I know in the past, sometimes, we would look at other line items that were under budget, and possibly take from those funds and adjust funds over to offset some of those as, uh...
Yeah, and that's kind of, again, what we did with the, the radios, in leveraging some of the, the money from the vacancies. But, um, I'm, I'm not quickly able to identify any other things that would make up, um, for that in this case. Uh, on the, on the Major Street side, that's not General Fund fund balance. That's in that Major Street Fund, and only able to be used for street maintenance. So, um, that's just a, a product of revenues a little higher over the last couple of years, and expenditures under, um, have built up, I think, about a $400,000 fund balance in the Major Street Fund prior to this year. And this project had, had, um, budgeted to use about half of that. So, still on pace for that, even with this little bit of, uh, increase.
Is there a list, um, Marcus, of why we're over budget in our legal services line item? I mean, we know, we had the Richardson lawsuit. We talked about some FOIA requests that have spent, we've had to spend a lot of resources to fill. Uh, what else is there in that area?
I would probably need to refer back to the quarterly report that just popped out, um, last week, where it listed 11 or 12 categories. Uh, but of the ones that you mentioned, they've certainly contributed, uh, to it. Uh, some of the labor issues that we've been working on as well, were higher than what we had anticipated, uh, combined with, again, the cost for performing some of the Freedom Information Act requests, and some of the litigation items. Uh, all of which were, again, higher than anticipated. Some of those notably are, are, if you will, coming offline, um, which is a good thing. Uh, and, you know, the desire this evening is to ensure that we don't exceed the appropriation. Um, we've worked with, um, Mike, and basically took a best guess estimate, uh, as far as what we believe is gonna be, um, um, appropriate to cover, uh, the balance of the year, taking actually, somewhat of a conservative approach, assuming that, that things continue to, um, to come offline.
So this amount, this amount, that should get us to the end of our fiscal year?
We certainly hope so.
Can you, so, I have similar questions, because this contractual service, that covers, um, all the items you discussed, plus the prosecution?
Yes. No, no. Prosecution is separate. Okay.
The prosecution, but this would cover, you mentioned the, uh, basically our, um, cost for legal, and with the lawsuits, with all of that combined in. Cause I, in the last budget cycle, and I know our whole council, we had this discussion multiple times, my concern, and I addressed it, because we were, we were getting this after the fact, and I, I was looking through, um, Mr. Petcher, unless there's an error here, I was looking through what we've spent out on, just this year so far up to December on legal, that we were close to exceeding $150,000 at the end of December. And then, when you take the two months up, I, we were in the ballpark of the 215 already.
Part of those are going to the utilities fund, so this is just the general fund portion?
Do, and I don't, I don't know the quarterly report that we're referring to. You have a quarterly report, you said that you sent out?
Yes.
That has the breakdown of the legal?
Mm-hmm.
So what is the expense as of today, then, um, of taking it out? Cause I, I don't know, is the utility, is that a common thing, where you'll switch that into the utilities? I thought we started to break it all down into that line item under budget for legal. legal, just in general, in terms of our budget items?
We try to allocate directly, the direct cost of the utility system, so when we talk about, um, we've done some things with our permitting process and some environmental issues, uh, some other utilities rate, the cross-connection things, that, that, uh, they had to write some ordinances for us, um, and then a, um, a portion of the annexation process fees, um, we have, um, directly allocated those to the Utilities Fund, and we've, we've always done that.
And it's separated out on the report where there's like an asterisk, if anything shows approximately how many, how many dollars, um, are being allocated towards that versus towards the General Fund, uh, projects.
So, what is the, what is for the date of date of that report? Cause I'm not sure, I, I didn't miss that report, but do you get that report in terms of what the, what's the current cost right now on that?
Well, I'd have to go get it. I don't know exactly what it was, um, as of that point. I think at the end of January, um, in the General Fund Contractual Services, it was at about one twenty for the, um, just on the General Fund side.
With a section of that now going to Utilities, which is a little...
Nope, nope, the one twenty is in the General Fund.
Right, but then there's another portion that went to the Utilities Fund?
Yep.
From the legal?
Yep.
That's probably...
Direct allocation towards the, yep, and I, yep, I have that broken all down, just not in front of me.
Because I, I just, I really, um, you know, and I know I brought this up, but we gotta, we gotta be given the opportunity to get a better handle of the council in terms of, you know, some of these we need to be getting upfront so that we're appropriating them and having a discussion before, because this, this item is gonna continually get higher, and, uh, um, when you take in the Utilities part, this number's getting higher. Like the last time that I saw the three twenty last year, I thought that was everything, not another portion going to Utilities. But there was everything.
Wasn't it? Again, I'd have to have the numbers in front of me, and I just don't have those.
You're looking at the total, I knew from last year that would've, that would've, that would've included all funds, not, not just General Funds.
For the three twenty last year, but we don't know what that total is today, then, with it all together, for this year?
Well, we, we know, and I did figure that, I, I don't have that, that if we this evening, uh, but it's under the total appropriation amount, which is...
You were talking about the general ledger thing that you filled us on a, a really basis?
Right.
I don't, you guys got on this...
He does it all the time, you know?
You just got on?
Yes.
No, the weakest...
Better, better weaker, so, yeah, that's fine, I didn't, I must either missed it or, yeah.
Well, you know, perhaps it's, um, if you'd like to, um, get a hold of that document that he's referring to, and then maybe we can just, uh, schedule a meeting or three with you and I and Marcus and Owen, and, you know, break it out so that we all have a clear understanding on the questions that you're asking.
I know last year we had this happen twice, where we, we had over the number, and I just, I know that this is one of our goals coming up, it's a really addressless, but I'm thinking we need to do this on a sooner than later end, a little...
It's like a little issue, yeah.
Right, and to start on it immediately, just because I, um, you know, when you look at these things, these appropriations, this keeps coming up, specific lawsuits and such, and, and we need to be on the fence on some of those that we hit, you know, to make sure we're making those decisions and have that information. Um, and that's, I think, something that's been happening differently, and I really believe that would be a way to lower this number in the future.
Hey, we'll get the meeting started.
I, I don't need a meeting with, I, I mean, it's just a...
Well, I thought you did, not, because moving forward, we wanted to get a breath.
I mean, I, oh, I'm sorry, with the goal-setting meeting, yes, with the whole council, yes, that would be great.
Okay.
I thought you meant the offline, but just this morning, I understand where this is, I just, I know we used to have it divided out for sections, that we put it all in that, that aspect of the budget, but, um, we ended up, last year, I think, making two or three amendments to it, and you're feeling that this is gonna be...
Yep, yep, well and done, that's our, that's our thing. May, may I, just very quickly?
Quickly.
Um, there's certainly a possibility, depending on, uh, the final payout of a retiree or soon-to-be retiree, that we might need to do another amendment on that, uh, but we're hoping on the legal, and that you want me to, uh, re-amend that. In case we do have to come back for another appropriations change, that'll be because of, um, of a retired person that has a sizable payout of accrued pay. That makes any sense?
Okay. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution amending the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen as presented. Support.
Kerry, can we have a real call, please? Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
We'll see Kerry.
All right, that takes us to the second public comment of our meeting, and the same as the first. If anyone would like to come forward, if you would, please provide your name and address, and limit your time to three minutes.
Kathy Foster, Chapin? I'm glad we brought up the, um, the street sweep. Um, I don't know, we might've talked about this, but I'm not sure who changes ordinances or adds to them, but I'm wondering if maybe we couldn't consider the street sweeping like we do the snow plowing, um, get off the road, kind of deal? I think the magical date is April fourteenth, where we get to see what everybody's got, and all the stuff goes on the street. Chapin, you can only park on one side, so come April, stuff's coming out, and it never gets cleaned, it can't, cause they don't move the stuff, the cars don't move. So, I don't know if anybody, in the winter, it's, what, every night, right, from time to time?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe if you had a day, I don't know, the sweeper guy probably doesn't, you know, sweep from two o'clock in the morning, you can't expect that, maybe you can, I don't know, but maybe somebody consider having, get your stuff off the street, because Chapin's never gonna get cleaned, and you talk about the drains?
Yeah.
They're, they're nasty. But it, you, you can't expect a machine that big to do this with cars. So, I don't know if it's ever been looked at, it might help your drains, cause they're always clogged on Chapin, right there, you know, so, anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you. What block do you live in, Kathy?
Hello, Richie Harris, one twenty-four and a half, Arrow Street, and I just want to say that how thankful I am of the, um, Street Department doing a wonderful job of getting the ice out of there real quick this year over in the Lincoln School area, because that used to become's Lake Arrow Street, and I watch cars hydroplane, and when the kids, and the way they park, you know, it's catastrophe, um, with all those parents where they have to line up and everything, so, they did a great job of getting the ice broke out of there, like, Sunday it flooded, Monday it was gone. So, they did a wonderful job, and that's appreciated. I also came because, um, yeah, I know you're talking about a lot of the legal fees and expenses, and when you go to meetings and you can't get answers, um, you rescinded the, um, back to the ethics ordinance, and the mayor says, "Well, if you don't like it, start litigation." Granted, Mr. Richardson's was prior to all of that happening, then we have a, a special meeting, a courtesy meeting, I guess it was called, with, um, Mr. Petcher, and, again, at the end of the meeting, we're told, "Well, if you're not getting the answers you like, seek litigation." So, something I didn't wanna do and haven't tried to refrain from doing, but the only way to get information is the FOIA things. Start looking at it, asking questions, um, deciding what direction, you know, we really need to go to, because I really, you know, I really feel there's no transparency in our council. And what I mean by that is, um, Mr. Richardson, I know, asked just for the judge, and which is something that all the people that I know that have failed, or that have done city ethics, the violations, were looking for were some straight answers of a third party, a neutral party, somebody that wasn't Mr. Petcher and his committee or the council, and let the judge look at him and make a decision. Well, the judge never saw the tapes, never saw, you know, from reading in the paper, what he said that, that he deemed that, um, Mr. Richardson was harassing you. Um, maybe he was, maybe he wasn't, but why couldn't he, or the judge, look at those tapes, listen to those tapes, and make a decision? And it never happened. So, where's our transparency? I guess, my fear is, what are we hiding? Who are we protecting? Um, I see a lot of little things go on here in town, um, and I'm just gonna throw one thing out, it really doesn't amount to a hill of beans, but, um, the ten, Ten Lake Brewery, or whatever they're called, they got a, a dumpster put in a city parking lot. Are you kidding me? They spent money years ago to eradicate the pigeons from downtown, and you put a dumpster next to the city park? Well, the parole guy down at G and D had fifteen toilets lined up beside his building forever, cause there was no place for him to put it, they wouldn't let him put it up against the telephone pole that restricted one of the parking spots. I guess I just don't understand where you guys justify in some of the things that you do and that you bring forward, and the fairness, it just deems that, um, things that are going on in this council are just really scary. Like, it actually takes more qualification to be the director of the new CWTA position than it does to be what's gonna be the head of our police department, that is so understaffed right now, it's pathetic, and now you're gonna move two more of them up? I don't know what's going on, but you guys need to look at some things.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment. I moved a bit of the order, and I'll start with Councilmember Bowman, excuse me.
Yeah, I had one, and I forgot what it was, but I, um, are you guys from Northern Princeton?
Yeah.
And our meeting started at six. Your instructor may have told you seven, cause we used to start at seven, so, maybe you guys can tell him or her to make sure he makes a note that, that we start at six from now, but, you know, maybe you, you can still get credit, maybe, and you didn't have to sit through a whole hour. You had dinner, and, you know. Um, I'm all set, thank you. Councilmember Shippers?
Okay. I have a few things, first of all. I see that Kathy Williams is here, and you weren't here when we, um, appointed you to the Board of Commission, or Board of Review, and I'd like to thank you for stepping up to do that, and I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you for asking.
Oh, you betcha. Um, also, I'd like to say that on Wednesday, we have another meeting of the Youth Council, and I would say come one, come all. The, the Youth Council has set as part of their interest, um, to become involved in, in community events, and this is something that maybe Mr. Harris can be interested too, because they want to get involved in more of the events that happen in the community and find ways for the youth to be involved in that. And another thing they're looking at is for safety and, um, and community, and looking at maybe coordinating with event folks to have some kind of, I don't know, a drug, um, prevention literature at events or something, but they're, anyway, they're going to have some presenters on Wednesday, the meeting is from four to five. The presenters are gonna be, I believe, Joe Vandree, talking about events, and somebody from law enforcement talking about, um, drug and violence prevention. So, these are our wonderful young people who stepped up to be on Youth Council, and any, anyone of any age is welcome to come to the meeting, but you must be under nineteen to speak at public comment. So, it gives a, you know, so, I, I promised them that we wouldn't be telling them what to do, that we wanted to listen to the young people.
We're gonna card you.
It's Wednesday from four to five, it would be really, and, and just to come, and, I mean, TV's amazing, young people. Right here in chambers, yep. Um, also, I would like to thank everyone in the community who participated in the Go for Wood Concert Sunraiser Saturday night. It was a wonderful concert, and we had so many community members donate items for our silent auction. I'm not sure of the final tally right now, but that's, that's what we do in order to keep our fund balance up so that we can hire musicians that come in once a month from September through May and put on world-class shows, and those take place at the Elks, uh, right here in downtown Cadillac, and they're open to the public. It's amazing, there's some fabulous concerts, and I believe the, she, the TV, our local cable TV, they filmed this one, and they do a live, and so that should be on cable TV too, if you'd like to just see what kind of things we have before you come in.
I can remember a love song again?
Yes, Kerry's husband performed, and he sang a love song to her. And the mayor and her husband donated a beautiful, um, nineteen fifty-something, sixty-eight, sixty-eight ukulele from, from Hawaii. There were artists who made artwork and donated it. There were young people, um, who donated things, uh, I think the youngest donor was my grandson Virgil, who did a black print and donated it to the auction, and somebody actually bought it, I didn't see for how much, but I'm guessing more than fifteen cents. Sorry, Virg. Um, so, thanks to, they, when the community comes out for stuff like that, it's just very, very cool, so, I think that's all I have. Don't forget to sign that, so. Oh, one more thing, I love it when we're asking about putting signs up and closing streets, because that's a sure sign of spring. That's all.
We're ready for that.
We are so ready. I'm a little scared.
Um, referencing on the Board of Review, I did wanna give a special thank you to Kerry Lanning here tonight, she helps, uh, through our Board of Review, spends a lot of time, this is the things we don't realize, but our staff does, and then, for example, we have an evening run, but she, doesn't mean she comes in late that day, she's in all very busy evening and here the next morning, and, uh, we really, um, you know, Councilmembers Bowman having a little tie with the county, but I, I cannot tell you enough how awesome the relationship is with our government collaborating with the county's Equalization Department, the assessing is phenomenal, and we've had areas of the towns, the assessment's going up about twenty percent in certain districts, and we're just not seeing the people, they, the, uh, the relationship has been built, um, with them, that people trust them, and they say they can go around ahead of time and such, and it's just a great relationship we have with the board, and, um, it's funny, I gave them the compliment the other day that, uh, it sounds like it's not a compliment, but because of you guys, we're bored, because we have time, usually we didn't have time to even sit, we never had a, a slow moment, but we get caught up because they've really built a relationship. Um, with that said, though, for the public, we still have one more day where the public could come on their properties, and that's tomorrow from nine AM to four PM here at, actually, in this, this room right here, so, um, that's our last day for the public's input, and I, thank you for mentioning Kathy Williams, it's a hard thing to get in one day and then be this technical, getting trained. be this technical, getting trained on the spot like that. So, um, just really impressed again with this year and how it's been going, and a lot of it has to do with the relationship that we have with the county equalization. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you. I have just a couple of announcements. Uh, well, one, if you haven't seen it, uh, there is a big bright yellow loader, uh-
How could you not see it?
And so many thanks to the Cadillac City Council for authorizing that new acquisition. Um, it's been a long time coming, uh, operations are incredibly excited for having it. Uh, it's gonna help us with relocating snow piles and doing other heavy work. Uh, it's- it's hard to believe, but, um, the piles get so heavy and so cumbersome, that when you try to maneuver them around the town as we move them from one location to the next to, uh, to get eventually hauled away, uh, current equipment can't do it. Uh, it can only move it a certain amount, and then if you stop and turn and then have to move it again, it doesn't have the ability of getting enough torque to push it. You may not have that experience, uh, during the rest of this winter, hopefully, but certainly for next, it'll hop on some, it'll certainly come in handy when it comes to other sprawls if the city has them living. Uh, so thank you for that. Uh, also, just wanted to mention that we do have, uh, various board and commission vacancies still available. Uh, there are four opportunities for folks to volunteer to join, uh, the elected officials' compensation commission. Um, two of those folks do need to be city residents, two do not, I believe. Um, there is also an opportunity, uh, for someone to join, uh, the election commission itself, they must reside either in the second, third, or fourth ward. Uh, we also have, um, some board of review openings, I believe. Uh, we have a couple of alternate positions open, uh, one on the second ward, one on the third ward, as well as a member for the third ward. Uh, for more information on- on the current vacancies, we do have a list available on our website, cadillac-my.net, and certainly you can contact the city at, uh, seven seven five zero one eight one as well. Um, application, uh, applications for the vacancies are also available for download off of our website, uh, too. So, uh, the last quick mention is to say, uh, we are now certified. Uh, the city of Cadillac is a part of Lexapro County, uh, is now part of a certified connected community. Uh, it's been, uh, at least a couple of years in the running now, we're as a part of the, uh, technology collaboration team, the county, the city, the chamber of commerce, uh, and working with the, um, uh, Michigan, Connect Michigan, uh, group, which is part of, uh, the Connect Nation group. Uh, we are now a certified broadband community. Uh, what that means, uh, generally speaking, is that there is now broadband access, uh, within our county up to a certain threshold. Uh, there's an assessment, uh, plan that's been put in place, which I'll get out as soon as I have the final, uh, the final version to share. Uh, it talks about where access still needs to be built up to, uh, but it also shows, uh, about the number of providers that are there and ways that people can connect, how schools and the library and other agencies are using broadband, uh, the importance of it to business, to education, uh, and for the community as a whole. Uh, it would hopefully be used, uh, once, um, we have this, uh, once it's out there and it's- and it's advertised more. Certainly is a marketing tool, uh, for folks that are looking to relocate to Northwest Michigan, whether it's an individual or a business alike, knowing that access to broadband technology is very important, uh, in today's world. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate Marcus, you bringing up the volunteer opportunities that still exist within the city. In fact, I had made that note before you spoke, wondering how many vacancies we still have, because we have them filling almost every time we meet, we fill them, so, um, that's great news. I just wanted to share a- a little story about, um, a neat lady that I've just met recently, and she's the new president, president of the Cadillac Hospital. And she comes to us from a hospital out in the city called Winchester, Virginia. And, uh, I met with her, and I had the greatest conversation with her, and it had to do with the people in Cadillac, and her perception of Cadillac. And she cannot get over, and in fact, she has her husband here, he's still there, but he was here this weekend, and they cannot get over how friendly this community has been to their family, and they've only been here about a month. All the way down to talking about going to Culvers for dinner, and what amazing young people we have in this community, and it just makes my heart so happy to have somebody of, um, that profession come into our community and make statements like that. That's- that's what this community is about, that's what we know it's about, but to have somebody come here and be here for such a short period of time and identify with it for huge things about our community, and I just wanted to share that. So, and I think she's gonna do a great job for us. And that's all I have. So, at this time, we are going to need a motion to go into closed session.
And, uh, Mayor, if you could do a couple of headings, I'd be happy to read that.
That would be great.
Um, so the motion at this point would be to adjourn to a closed session to discuss pending civil litigation in the case of Louis J. Richardson Jr. versus City of Cadillac, case number fourteen dash two-five-three-two-one dash CZ, and Charter Township of Herring v. City of Cadillac, and Donald and Rowa Bozma, Lexapro County Circuit Course, case number thirteen dash two-four-six-zero-six dash CH, Court of Appeals, uh, case number three-one-eight-one-seven-four, three-one-eight-one-seven-five, three-one-eight-eight-two-one, and three-one-eight-eight-two-three, uh, which would also include inviting, um, the Bozmas that are present, along with, um, Jeffrey D., our utilities director, to that meeting. Uh, additionally, we would like to add, uh, the case of City of Cadillac versus, um, Mitchell Lake Corporation, case number fourteen dash two-five-six-zero-two dash CH.
I'll make that motion.
Carrie, can we have a real call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Do we do the, uh-
Well, I'll make a motion that we return to open session.
All right.
Carrie, can we have a real call, please? Councilmember Malama? Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes.
So, Mayor and members of the city council, uh, as discussed this evening with respect to the, um, uh, litigation regarding, uh, the city and Bozma and Herring Township, uh, it would be appropriate to change for a motion, uh, to follow the recommendation of the city attorney as discussed in the closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Real call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion, Carrie.
With that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting for the city.